Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Geneva City Council Chamber. This regularly scheduled city council meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our distinguished clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Derek Burkhart?
Here.
Don Cummings?
Here.
Gene Kilburg?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marx?
Here.
Jim Radecki?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Here.
Tom Simonean?
Here.
Ron Singer?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's customary that we begin our city council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, but what's unusual is that we seldom if ever ask our city clerk to lead us in the pledge. Tonight is Clerk Landberg's final meeting with us. His entire family has traveled near and far to be here this evening, so clerk, if you would do us the honor of leading us to the pledge, we'd be honored in return.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Item number four, ladies and gentlemen, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments offered by anyone on the council and/or anyone in the audience this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council and can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion. Alderman Marx makes the second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Derek Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Gene Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda passes with nine affirmative votes, no nay votes, and one absent. We skip down to item 9A, is to recommend acceptance of the fiscal year 2016-2017 Goals Status Report. Is there such a motion to accept? Alderman Sino makes the motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marx. Any questions or comments for either our city administrator and/or anyone who has helped produce the report? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes with nine affirmative votes, no nay votes, and one absent. We skip down to item 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our distinguished clerk to read the bills for our consideration in their aggregate.
Bills for payment total $1,484,717.09.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the Geneva website, and nice job, clerk.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, available on the website and available in the council members' packets this evening. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Burkhart. Any questions or comments regarding the bills for our consideration? Hearing none, seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Derek Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Gene Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Motion passes with nine affirmative votes, no nay votes, and one absent. We skip down to committee of the whole items of business, and there are none. Therefore, we head to item 12, presentation of ordinances. There are none. We are at new business, ladies and gentlemen. New business. Alderman Singer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Whatever success the city of Geneva has achieved while any of us have served as council members has to be attributed to the present and past efforts of many city council members that we have served with. It is with great pride that I was part of a team effort that was made up, has made up an outstanding administrative staff, public works, police and fire departments, that are second to none. At this point in time, I would like to take and give a big thank you to my darling wife, Marilyn, a special lady. I've been married to her for close to 59 years. Her many sacrifices allowed me to serve the city these past 20 years. And a thank you to the citizens of the 4th Ward for allowing me to serve you as well. A word for those of you who will be new to the city council. The easiest way to grow as an alderman and alderwoman is to surround yourself with people who are smarter than you are. Even though there were days I wish I could change some things that happened in the past, there's a reason the rearview mirror is so small and the windshield is so large. It's because where we're headed is much more important than what we've left behind. I'd like to say thank you to the mayor, to current aldermen, and all the residents of Geneva, and my best wishes to our new aldermen. Thank you.
Alderman Singer, our clerk has asked to say a few words as well.
No, this is my behalf.
Alderman Radecki, you want to say something?
Sure. Well, first of all, Ron, I wanted to tell you how much you've meant to me, both personally and professionally, and I just wanted to thank you, but just as you did, I think that the people of Geneva and this city council owes just a tremendous thank you to your wife, Marilyn. Anybody who's done this job or done it for any amount of time knows that this is a real imposition upon our spouses at times. We all know that. It goes beyond just the Monday meetings. It goes beyond taking phone calls. We make some pretty heavy decisions that we take home with us sometimes, and we look to our spouses for some balance in our life, and Marilyn, you have always done that, just with such class and dignity. That's what I think of when I think of you, and I just want to thank you on behalf of the city council and everybody for your support of Ron. You are a partner in every sense of the word to Ron, and thank you. And how do you do justice when you talk about a person like Ron? And I think it's important to remember that here's a person who served and fought in the Korean War. He was a teacher for over 30 years. He's been a member of the Geneva City Council for 20 years. He's raised a fine family. He's been married for almost 59 years, and probably the greatest achievement of his life was shooting his age in golf. Any of you who are golfers know that there's just a fraction of people that have been able to do that. It was quite an accomplishment. I was glad to be there for it. But it's not just the accomplishments that Ron has made in his life, but it's the manner with which he's done that that really is what's important. You are a true gentleman, and you're kind to everybody that you meet, Ron, and even sometimes to the people that really don't deserve it, you're kind to them. I think once a teacher, always a teacher, and you've taught me a lot about being an alderman, and particularly that we represent our constituents above all else. I was at a meeting with Ron about a year ago at a homeowner's meeting, and I was impressing everybody with my knowledge of the city, and the meeting was going from bad to worse, and they were getting ready to lynch me, and Ron just stood up and said, "Hey, we represent you, not the city." And he said it with such sincerity that everybody in the room understood what he meant and got control of the meeting. That's the kind of person that he is. But you've also taught me a lot about life, Ron, to take care of yourself physically, to pray to your God regularly, give back to your community, and above all else, to love your family and to love your friends. So on behalf of myself and the entire city of Geneva, we owe you a debt of gratitude. Thank you for your friendship, and best of luck to whatever you choose to do next. Thank you.
Alderman Sino?
I just would like to thank you, Kevin, first of all, for appointing me the first time for this. It's been a great opportunity. I've met so many great people through this experience and made some special friends. These men, Antara, like my little young alderman sister, but these guys are like brothers to me, and they've been so helpful and so kind, and I didn't know anything about Robert's rules or these kind of meanings, and they just reached out to me. I know all their kids and their families, and it's been wonderful, and seen Flo at work, and all that good stuff. I can't walk away without mentioning the city staff, Stephanie Rich, David, Rita, and Kathleen. Kathleen's the quiet rock star, I think, of the economic development. And Peter Collins, I'm sure I drive him crazy with my IT issues, but that's just the way it is. Chief Antonori and Chief Passerelli, I'm sure Chief Passerelli and I have not finished our relationship with my sons in the life of Geneva, so... Anyway, I'm so proud and happy to be handing off to a woman like Becky. She's so enthusiastic and has great spirits. And three women on city council, young women, I'm so happy, and you go girlfriends. Rock on.
Mr. Clerk?
Well, I just wanted to say it's been a long time since I won't be having anything to do with the city. Going back to the 1970s, when I got a call from Mayor Wood to serve on an Economic Development Committee and in conjunction with the development of the first TIF district, the Geneva-on-the-Dam Development. And I've seen a lot of aldermen and a few mayors come and go during that time. I've also been around for a lot of changes and growth in Geneva. I've also seen a lot of cooperative spirit in Geneva and occasional dissension, but I always felt that most everyone involved, mayors, aldermen, committee, and commission members, and residents, had the best interests of Geneva in mind, just didn't always agree on the best way to get there. But I think I've been most impressed with the hundreds of volunteers who continue to give their time and expertise in making and maintaining the exceptional community that is Geneva. I'm honored to have served the community in various capacities and grateful that I've had the opportunity to be involved. I welcome the new members of the city council and those who will be serving on the city's many volunteer committees in the future, and I truly believe that Geneva remains in good hands. Thank you.
I was just reminding the clerk that despite the standing ovation, he still has to complete these minutes. Anyone else? Any comments for anyone regarding anything? We're still in our new business, ladies and gentlemen. If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order? Oh, that's right. But first, gifts. Mr. Landberg, this is a gift on behalf of the council and the community. You've heard me say this before, this is dinner for two at the mill race.
I was waiting for that.
You were waiting for that? It's a small token, and this is going to come out of your last check. Alderman Sino? I stole yours. Alderman Singer? The clerk received a gift of the council's picture. Singer got one of Sino, and Sino got one of Singer. It's amazing. Any other new business, ladies and gentlemen? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order?
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes the motion. Alderman Sino makes the second. All in favor of adjourning this meeting, please say aye.
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 We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. In just a few moments, ladies and gentlemen, we will invite the new council members forward to be sworn into office. We have a very distinguished guest with us this evening. We will introduce all of you to him momentarily, just a few housekeeping issues to take care of, and then we will begin the ceremony. And most importantly, following the second council meeting this evening, there is cake. This is a council meeting.
Start with the old first.
Correct. Ladies and gentlemen, we begin this city council meeting with the request from the city clerk to please take the roll call.
No.
Nope.
No.
We're going to administer the oath, my apologies. We have a distinguished gentleman joining us in the second row, Judge Anderson, retired Judge Anderson. Judge, welcome to the city council chamber. This gentleman is a retired associate judge of the Kane County 16th Judicial Circuit. Perhaps most notably, he called Elgin home for over a half a century, and just recently has called Geneva home for about a year or so, right? About a year and a half. So one of our newest residents who has graced us with his presence tonight to administer the oath to all those taking the oath. So without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go in ward order. I kindly ask that Alderman Bruno invite any guests he'd like, and we are going to get out of your way.
I, Mike Bruno. Having been elected to the office of alderman. First Ward in the city of Geneva. County of Kane. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the state of Illinois. The Geneva City Code of Ordinances. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office. Of alderman according to the best of my ability.
We invite Alderman Richard Marx.
I, Richard Marx. Having been elected to the office of alderman. Second Ward in the city of Geneva, county of Kane. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the state of Illinois. The Geneva City Code of Ordinances. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office. Of alderman according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Becky Ruby, correct?
Yes.
Alderman-elect Becky Ruby.
I, Becky Ruby.
I, Becky Ruby.
Having been elected to the office of alderman. Third Ward in the city of Geneva, county of Kane. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the state of Illinois. The Geneva City Code of Ordinances. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of alderman. According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Alderman-elect Gene McGowan. The biggest crowd here tonight.
I, Gene McGowan. Having been elected to the office of alderman. Fourth Ward in the city of Geneva, county of Kane. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the state of Illinois. The Geneva City Code of Ordinances. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of alderman. According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Alderman-elect Robert Swanson.
I, Robert C. Swanson. Having been elected to the office of alderman. Fifth Ward in the city of Geneva, county of Kane. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the state of Illinois. The Geneva City Code of Ordinances. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of alderman. According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
City of Geneva Treasurer Patrick McQueenie.
I, Patrick McQueenie. Having been elected to the office of treasurer. In the city of Geneva, county of Kane. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the state of Illinois. The Geneva City Code of Ordinances. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of treasurer. According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
I, Kevin Burns. Having been elected to the office of mayor. In the city of Geneva, county of Kane. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the state of Illinois. The Geneva City Code of Ordinances. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor. According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Now it's my turn to ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Derek Burkhart?
Here.
Don Cummings?
Here.
Becky Ruby?
Here.
Gene Kilburg?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marx?
Here.
Gene McGowan?
Here.
Jim Radecki?
Here.
Robert Swanson?
Here.
Again, we begin this council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask the Honorable Bob Swanson to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob. Item 3A, ladies and gentlemen, is to recommend the mayor's reappointment of city officials for 2012, excuse me, 2017, 2018.
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes the motion. Alderman Maladra makes the second. Any questions or comments from any member of the council?
Do they all want it?
You can't ask that question. A roll call vote is in order. Mr. Clerk, we're going to keep you here until the wee hours of the morning.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Derek Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Gene Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Gene McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, professional staff, congratulations and thank you again for re-upping and for the extraordinary work you do. We appreciate it. Item 3B is to consider the mayor's appointment of Alderman Mike Bruno as mayor pro temp. Is there a motion?
Seconded.
Alderman Maladra makes the motion. Alderman Kilburg makes the second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Have stained.
Derek Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Gene Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Gene McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Motion passes with nine affirmative votes, no nay votes, but one abstention. Thank you, Mayor Pro Temp Bruno. Item 3C is to recommend mayor's appointment of Stephanie Dawkins as the city's deputy clerk. This is primarily a housekeeping issue, perhaps most notably now that we have no clerk after tonight. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Marx, seconded by Alderman Bruno. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Derek Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Gene Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Gene McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Stephanie. Item 3D is to proclaim May 7 through the 13th, 2017, as Public Service Recognition Week. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. Motion by Kilburg, seconded by Marx. Questions, comments? A voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? At your own peril. Motion passes unanimously. Item 3E is to proclaim May 2017 as Preservation Month in the city of Geneva.
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion.
Second.
Alderman McGowan makes the second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any amendments to the agenda, folks? Let's hope not. Omnibus agenda? All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine? All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine. And there's none.
Other than, other than minutes. There's a committee meeting.
Yep. And this can be enacted, the omnibus agenda can be enacted with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes the motion. Alderman Cummings makes the second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Chair Burkhart?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Jean Kilburg?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We skip down to new business. Is there any new business from any member of the community? From the dais, Alderman Ruby, Alderman Bruno?
I'd like to put in a plug for the 12th Annual Bridgewater. It's a 5K, helps raise critical funds and awareness for Living Well Cancer Research Center, and I was asked that you join the Blue Warriors team. The phone number is 630-262-1111. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno?
If it's not too late and if it's appropriate, I would pass that we, what's the term, turn down our fee for the second meeting, waive the fee for the second meeting if it's not a special meeting. Ignore I said that.
Let the record show you just cost the city. Anyone else from the dais? I have two important announcements to make. First and foremost, Alderman McGowan's mother, who is joining us this evening, is also celebrating her birthday. I am not permitted to say what birthday it is. And our city treasurer, Pat McQueenie's father, who is also here this evening, where is he? He snuck out early. There he is, Mr. McQueenie, it's your birthday as well. Let me just put it this way, folks, Mr. McQueenie is 10 years older than Ms. McGowan. You guys deal with the ages yourselves, so congratulations. And if the council and community would indulge me, I just have a few remarks I'd like to make. First off, Judge Anderson, in the back room, signing all the documents. I want to acknowledge and thank his presence this evening. Members of the city council, professional staff, ladies and gentlemen, present and watching on TV. What I'm about to say is probably, this next sentence I'm about to say is probably one of the great understatements of our time. Suffice it to say, we live in interesting times. Very interesting times. And interesting times demand sincerely interested people of all ages and all walks of life to come together and address the opportunities and the challenges that we face as a community by recognizing and embracing the diversity that surrounds us, the breadth and depth of the experiences our residents and business owners have enjoyed and endured, and above all, elevating the dialogue between us and among us based on this simple tenet: Seek first to understand, then to be understood. The term diversity, of course, means so much more than what common vernacular decrees. In addition to gender, race, religion, or socioeconomic status and so on, diversity must also mean the diversity of thought, of opinion, of experiences, perception, convictions, and expectations. More than 50 years ago, John Kennedy said, "If we cannot now end our differences, at least we can help make the world safer for diversity." And you know as well as I do that we have not yet accomplished that goal. But that doesn't mean we give up and continue to strive to achieve that goal. More recently, President George Herbert Walker Bush stated, "We are a nation of communities, a brilliant diversity spread like stars, like a thousand points of light in a broad and peaceful sky." Do we, as a small community of 22,000 people, risk being labeled as overly self-assured that such aspirational language applies to us? Or are we self-aware enough that despite being small in stature, we aim for, we work toward, and we pursue unapologetically grand goals? Geneva is certainly defined by where we've been, but we also must define ourselves by where we're heading and ultimately where and whom we want to be, knowing that such a journey never ends and that recalibration and rerouting is constant. Can we realize our full potential by resting on our laurels? Of course not. Can we realize our full potential by steering consciously or otherwise ourselves on the same path, in the same direction, achieving the same results? Of course not. Therefore, together, we must acknowledge that Geneva cannot achieve where we want to go or who we want to be unless we pursue involving all who call Geneva home. All who call Geneva home must be granted the opportunity to participate in the future designs, architecture, and furnishings of this community. So I say tonight, let us begin with new faces, with new experiences, with new expectations, new perceptions, and new energy. Let us develop a new algorithm of public service, a formula that integrates, not separates, the knowledge and experience of our professional staff, the perspective and insights of our citizenry, the faith and fortitude of our businesses, large and small, and may we always be guided by a compass that delicately, yet decisively, leads us in the direction of where we want to go and who we want to be. To borrow from the medical pioneer Jonas Salk, I believe that our greatest responsibility is to be good ancestors. And finally, my thanks and my love to my family, my parents John and Ann who are here this evening, my brothers John, Brian, my sister Colleen, and their respective families, and of course, my daughters Emma, who's here tonight, and Florence. To my daughter Grace, who is living in St. Petersburg, Russia, hopefully tuning in. To my granddaughter Mica and my soon-to-be grandson. And to the woman who each and every day helps me understand where I am and who I am, Amy Baikowski. Amy, you are my anchor and my sail. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. If there's no other new business, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Marx?
Second.
Second by Alderman Burkhart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The microphones are off, the cameras are off, and the cake has arrived.